We'll go ahead and call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Special meeting FY '26 budget work session ordered on June 10th at 5:30. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Again, the purpose of this meeting is one of our scheduled budget work sessions for FY '26 as we move towards an approved recommended budget. Just want to remind everyone that we are streaming live on our YouTube page so that the community can be part of this as well as go back and review it after the meeting as needed. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Faircough to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Please stand while we honor God and country. Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to come together and to do the business of our people. We ask that the decisions we make be acceptable in your sight and in those of our people. Ask you to say in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
County Manager Greer, we want to add an additional item up front, so we'll call it 3A.
2A.
2A.
And I'll let you go ahead and introduce that item.
Yes, we have an overview of the upcoming fiscal year '26 Parks and Rec budget. Michael Gibson, Parks and Rec Director, Cumberland, well, Fayetteville Cumberland, Parks and Rec Director will come and present that item and answer any questions you may have. Good afternoon, Michael.
And Michael, before you start, we also have Adam Lindsay with us as well. Assistant city manager.
Assistant city manager. And I don't want to get in trouble with my mom. Adam, here, my mom's a man. So, here you go.
Mr. Gibson, thank you for being, making time for us. We know the city has a lot going on tonight with our 2050 plan or presentation.
Did I mess them up? Is that fault one? Yeah. And this council's all right.
Here we go. The upcoming budget for Fayetteville Cumberland and the district's budget. What you have here is a breakdown of what we spend and how we operate the funding for the county's district recreation, which consists of all the municipality except Hope Mills. And you can see what we spend on parks, what we spend on the administration, and these are the people that work in the rec centers down here and then some administrative staff. The park district is the people who work out in the parks and the maintenance, the equipment operators. And then you have the special events where you might have the event, the lights in the park or for the Christmas light show. And then you have your recreation centers, your Stedman Pine Forest, Stony Point, JD Pone, Eastover Recreation Center. Then you have Spring Lake Center and the senior center. And then what we call a cost redistribution, which is our countywide programs, the pools, the senior centers, and then Gilmore Recreation Center, which is special needs and the shared costs with the FCCYC. Any questions?
Commissioners, let me, before I turn over the commissioners, is this the only slide you're presenting to us tonight?
Yes, sir. Was there something?
I'm just asking before I open up to the commissioners. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Gibson.
Yes, sir.
I'm doing well. So, question, the, and I appreciate you giving us this breakdown. In terms of the individual proposed budget numbers for the centers, this is only operational. It doesn't, it doesn't include kind of our capex. Do we have a proposed capex on some of those investments that we need to make in some of these centers? Or can you walk us through kind of where we are capitalizing?
Well, let me, what has happened in the past is over the, over the last 20 years, the operating funding has built up a reserve. And that is what we have used to build the parks. And what we would normally do is the past county administrators or assistant county manager would go out and talk to the municipalities and they would say, here's our wish list. Based on the funding that we had, the fund balance that we would have on this, on the city's ledger, on that, on that side of the books, there would be a million dollars or $2 million left over. And then we would say, oh, we have this amount of money that we believe we could use to do some capital projects, like put in splash pads, put up shelters, do some playground units. And that's how that capital, it wasn't anything planned. It would just be what was left over that we believe we could use outside of what it would take to operate. Those, that funding is just about gone. So, there is no capital. Over the past couple of years, the commissioners have decided to fund some individual park improvements on the county's budget ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The commissioners, Commissioner, have you recognized?
Yeah. And that might be, did this a lot of, a lot of times. And I do understand all of the city, but the district's special events, that's kind of new to me. What, who decides that and what is that?
Well, it was, it's just like the, when you go out to Arnett Park and you have the Christmas light show and, and people drive through the lights at Arnett Park, that's basically the biggest one.
Right.
And, and that's how that's done. And we just, we have done it for, we just done it.
Yeah. I just didn't know what that was.
Yes, sir. That's what those are.
Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Gibson, can you explain the difference in district administration and the cost redistribution?
Yes. Your, your administration, district administration are your staff people. When, when the agreement was done, all the employees that worked in the county came over as city employees. We have analysts, we have recreation staff, we have split the cost of park superintendent, we call assistant director now. So, all of those people at the beginning of this process just came over and they still run or get paid to run the district environment as a collaborative within the city because nobody could lose their jobs at the time. So, we've just called that district administration or park, district park employees. That's what that is. Now, down, when you said the cost distribution? Well, over the years, the, the cost to run the pools, the cost to have the senior centers, the cost for the Gilmore special needs, that's always been a shared cost. So, whatever it takes to run those countywide programs, which that's what we have deemed them to be, it's 50%, 50% because we don't charge a non-residency fee to people who are in the district. So, a child who comes from Linden pays the same fee as a child that lives inside the city because of that redistribution or that cost share.
So, thank you. The, the district administration fee for the 1.6 million, how, how's that calculated as far as, I mean, unless they're specifically employees just for county assets and then employees just for city assets, how does the breakdown on, on, I guess, the hours that they put in or the facilities that they're, they're spending their time on?
We don't, we don't have a breakdown like that. They just, they're, they work for the Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation. They don't, we don't say, oh, you're gonna, James McMillan or Jeremy Mincy, once you get to 20 hours, you stop working for the county and now you work for the, now you work for the city. It's their salary because they work just as many hours for the city as they work for the, for the district. It's the same thing with a person, we, we take economy of scale and you take advantage of the collective good.
So, so are you saying that it's a 50-50 split then?
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you that, that every minute of the day is calculated.
From a budget standpoint?
Oh, yes.
So, is the city looking at the same?
Oh, yeah.
You know, line item.
Oh, yeah. That we have the same thing because we have assistant directors for recreation, I mean, for parks that the city pays for.
So, a couple of questions from the chair. Mr. Gibson, again, thank you for being here and thank you for taking the time to come talk to us. We look forward to having more of these conversations. Just want to make sure I understood, you said there were no reserves for capital investment.
There are no reserves. We're comfortable saying that we wouldn't need those for operating this year. Normally, we try to keep at least 50% of what it costs to run the district budget in case something happens. If there is a cost of living raise or something, then that money for the cost of living comes out of those reserves. We don't believe that this coming year, that we'll have enough fund balance to do any capital projects from that reserve this coming year.
So, to that point, all capital projects are spent out of fund balance versus the dollars that are associated to each of the areas based on the parks and rec tax?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
And you're, so I'm to understand there is zero fund balance, right?
No, no, there's not zero. There's, there's a fund balance that we're not comfortable doing capital projects out of this year.
What is that fund balance?
Probably about 1.3 million.
Probably?
Yes, sir. That's roughly now because I don't know, we haven't closed out everything. So, I don't want to say it's, I know the last time that I looked at it was like 1.3, but once they close out, it could easily get to 1.5. So, I just want to be, you know.
And so, over the last year, what capital investments were made in, as you're calling
There were playground units out at Stedman that were done. I don't have a, a list of exactly what we all spent, but there is a list that comes over to the county manager for him to approve us doing capital. But I know there was a playground unit done at Stedman in this fiscal year. There was some work done out at, no, that, that was capital that was on the county side. And then the other funding came from the state. I think the chairman is asking specifically funding that came from the five cent tax and the fund balance.
I'm looking for, I got you, Commissioner Tyson, stand by. I'm looking for what was spent on district capital from the fund balance that would have came from the five cent tax.
Yes. And that, those were.
And you may not be able to do that, but I guess, you don't have to provide it, but it maybe can be a takeaway that gets brought back to us. The capital investment between the district and the city. So, what was a total cap, fund, capital, or the total fund balance and then what was allocated for capital against the, the district or county, I'll say, and then the city?
Gotcha.
So, that would be one asked that, and again, you don't have to, if we can just get it, we've still got a few more budgets. We're behind the city in approving our budget. So, we've got a little bit of time. So, that would be one. And then, based on the increased costs that the manager is projecting in his budget, our county manager is projecting his budget for the parks and rec, what's the intent for that?
I'm not aware of that, of what's, what the county manager is projecting for county recreation. Once your budget is passed, then he'll say you have this much funding to go do this. And then we'll go and do what, what he asks us to do.
Got you. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess this is most, more of a question for, for our staff on this side. So, I've got the FY '25 budget board here of what was, what was adopted and approved. And I saw for FY '25, we had an operating allocation of 5.337 with a capital outlay of 243. And so, I guess my question is, was that 243, is that a capital outlay that Mr. Gibson was speaking to with playground upgrades and all that? Or kind of, if somebody can just walk me through what the distinction is on our budget
What page are you on, Commissioner?
This is 292 of the adopted. I can patch it up if you want. That's FY '25.
We're having a tag change here because this is not, it's handled differently.
And as a fellow, Mr. Chairman, while the research is out, if I look in the, in page 86 of the proposed FY '26 budget, if I go to the line item 250 there.
Page what now?
86.
Okay.
I go to item number 250, which is the recreation fund. I see the 5.5 for operations, for, I see the adopted FY '25 number 55 with the year and projection number of 6.1. So, is 6.1 what we sent to the city in FY '25 or was it the 5.5?
Okay. First of all, in 250, you have the county's recreation tax, then you also have the Hope Mills tax that we collect and send to them. So, there's two different parts rolled up into 250. Talking about hours, 2, which is 25441, which is the capital, our original budget would have, out of that 5.5 million, our original budget would have been about 4.9. There we go.
Gotcha.
Okay. Then I'm, she's got contracted services.
Yes, the city.
And then there were some capital improvements. And can my team pull up what those project codes are? It's PR 103, PR 104, PR 105. And 2504441?
PR 103 is the Stedman Park.
Okay.
And PR 104 is Eastover Park. And our PR 105 is Arnett Park.
So, there were some projects evidently that was being done that we had, the invoices were sent over and paid on our books.
And the second part, if my man, Mr. Chairman, the second part of my question, the difference between the 5.5 and the 6.1 for the adopted versus year and projections?
Right. The year and projection, we're budgeting just, or she's budgeting just what the values are. You've got people that's paid late fees that's coming in, and that's probably where that year end projection is coming in. But we can look at that also.
And the 6.1 would have, we would have dispersed that in its entirety back to the city, correct?
Yeah. By the end of this fiscal year, we'll disperse that. That's the projected dispersion for the end of the fiscal year.
And, and just to, the, the, this, the, Arnett Park was the new sewage lines for the bathrooms out there.
Commissioners, any other questions for?
May I clarify something?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. On the year end projection, again, for the county side, the year end projection was 5.4 million. The other one would have been Hope Mills. And there were some other improvements, PR 100, if someone could tell. if someone could tell, Commissioner Tyson, PR 101, PR 102, I think we've already spoke, 103, 104, 105, and 107. Can you, can you tell him what those projects were? What, um, recreation districts?
PR 100 is the Falcon Park. PR 101 is the Godwin Park. PR 102 is the Wade Park.
Okay, and when you did the 102, it was like the multi-purpose field clearing, tennis court refurbishing, and parking lot spray, just so I can kind of tell you as she goes along. Okay, I'm sorry, Ashley.
Okay.
Go ahead, 103?
103 was the Stedman Park.
And that's basketball improvements, baseball field, and HVAC replacements?
Uh, 104 was the Eastover Park.
Okay, that is Broadway, a cross trail, walking trail, and boardwalk landscaping, a park sign refurbishing, and HVAC replacement.
105 was Arnett Park.
Drain field system and HVAC replacement.
And there's a PR 107, that's Pine Forest Rec Center.
And that is playground equipment. And we, we get back to just 100 and 101 since we just get those. 100 was a walking trail extension, trail improvements, parking lot, and fencing and playground. And then 101 is parking lot town hall.
Man, that's a lot in '25.
That could be reappropriated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go back to Mr. Gibson, if that's okay. So given, and I appreciate the staff's clarification. Thank y'all for your quick work on that. Given the delta of the county's portion being the 49 versus the 54 for budgeted versus actual, and the county manager's statement that the half a million is going to be transferred here in the near future, would that change your assessment on funding that could potentially be available for future capital?
That's exactly right. Once he sends that over and we say, okay, we're going to operate with this, then we have to say to him, here's what your fund balance is. Is there anything you would like for us to do? And that's the way we have done it for the past. It's been a long time.
And then we bring it back to the commissioners, will you all approve it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, anything else?
Just a question. Do we have any recommendations from the recreation park forward on the budget?
Currently, right now, what we have, that we have not completed for the district is the Cedar Creek Park, and we're still having discussions about the roads, pond, environment, and what that looks like. Past that, there is nothing that we have that's sort of outstanding.
Wade, multi-purpose field.
Well, we're about to finish that up if we can get past...
Yeah, I know, I know. I know.
What has always kind of driven me from this is that we look at Eastover, Stedman, Wade, all of those because they're cities. Vander who has no, no city, and way out in Graves Creek, which has no city, and really nobody to speak for them. I think we have to be cognizant when we look at this and talking to Parks and Rec, that they're not left out of this. And that was one of the reasons we had this conversation. Even as we're talking about the park in Cedar Creek, is that it could be close enough that Vander can use it too. So I think we got to be cognizant of those two huge areas that just don't get, sometimes they get left out. They just, so when we do these dollar figures, that's one of the things I would, I think we need to keep in mind.
Commissioners, anything else? Just as a note, Mr. Gibson, it's an increase of about a little over $3 million. Based on values. And that's not going to change because the values are the values.
We'll talk.
We, we thank you.
No, yes, sir, we will talk. Anything else for, on Parks and Rec side? County manager, anything else to add on that?
Nothing, nothing from our board.
Mr. Gibson, thank you. We allowed you to get to the mayor's event.
We appreciate it.
I want to say that publicly, so if y'all don't show up, then, you know.
I see, I see.
I'm here to support.
Mr. Lindsay, thank you for attending.
Thank y'all.
County manager, we'll go ahead and move to item three, capital investment fund, and I will allow, we'll go ahead and start. I'm assuming, Ms. Shaw, we're going to go through our deck again?
Yes, Chairman, we have, we follow in the same format that we've done in the past, two work sessions. For each of these sessions, we have a presentation. Deborah will go through it, answering questions you may have, and I'll interject as needed. Deborah, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Our first topic is Fund 106, the county school fund, and our finance director, chief financial officer, Robin Coons, will be speaking of this.
Which pages are we on?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I, I think the, the biggest thing for me in explaining this is probably to work with this in conjunction with the debt model, especially particularly the education debt model. But basically, Fund 106 is where all the special sales tax is recorded that has to go towards schools, and then the lottery revenues are also recorded in that fund.
Page 67, just if you're following in the book.
In addition to that, so those are the kind of the revenue streams, is the sales tax, the special sales tax for schools. In our debt model, we budgeted about close to $20 million in this, this current fiscal year, and we have, we increase it a little bit every year. And then also, the lottery funds, excuse me, the recorded in Fund 106 are also part of our education debt model. And as you know, several things get paid out of this. When you're looking at the category 1, 2, and 3 expenditures, those are what we consider PEGO. So those are cash payment, not, not debt-related payments. Category 1 is your repairs and renovations, land purchases, if you were to have that kind of purchase. Category 2 is equipment and technology, and then category 3 is vehicles, buses, that sort of thing. So you can see that the recommended budget for fiscal year 2026 is $30 million, 199,916. And I do want to point out, and I apologize if I just haven't been on my A-game for the last week or so, but I didn't realize until today that the number that you see here is duplicated down here. That's why on your year end projection, your number is so much higher on the revenue side than it is on the expenditure side. So just ignore this number.
Which, which number, the top line sales tax number?
Uh-huh, uh-huh. So your, your year end projection revenues and expenses is going to be this number down here. So I, I don't know how much detail you want to go into here. I think looking at this in conjunction with the education debt model is the best way to explain it, but this is just kind of the, you know, cursory introduction to it. And I'll be glad to answer any questions now, or if you want to hold off until I go over the debt models, I'd be glad to do that, too.
Commissioners, unless anybody has objections, I'd like to go ahead and move into the debt model because that's really where we're focused.
Okay.
And you're going to review the debt model that you sent out this week that has increased debt and annual transfer scenario only? Or which one are you going to look at?
Well...
Or are you going to look at both? Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
Do you want to start with the general government debt models, or do you, would you like to start with the education debt models?
I think we're on the education. It may make sense to correlate that.
Okay, so I think what I'd like to do is start, can you click that one? Yeah, okay. So this is the debt model that was in place with the prior board. And you can see there was a total of $163,700,000 in, in debt in this plan. All right, so if you look at the revenue side of it, this is where you see the education lottery revenue coming in in that first column, and then the school sales tax revenue. So those in the old model were the two revenue streams to fund that $163 million of proposed debt. You see some other things in columns D, kind of moving to the right, but those things expire in 2026. So some of that's related to some of the, the other financing that we already have in place. Now, as we pay that stuff off, you won't see those, the federal subsidies or the sinking fund or any of that anymore. So I think what you need to focus on is the education lottery column and the school sales tax column as your revenue streams here. And then if we go back to the summary page, you'll see that the first section shows you the revenue in this column F. This is the debt that we have outstanding at this point in time, just under $10 million to be paid off by June of 30, 2030. And the future issue column, column H, this is, this was what was proposed when we were going to finance at $163,700,000. You will go further right to column M. These are your PEGO projects. So when you look at the things that are the category A, excuse me, category 1, 2, and 3 expenditures that we looked at earlier in Fund 106, all of those things roll into that. Just to give you a historical perspective, we have done more PEGO in the last few years than what was budgeted, but our revenues have been higher as well. So if you look at 2024, we did PEGO of just over $17 million. But as part of the model, it's budgeted right around that $12 million annual amount. So this column N gives you the total of all the debt service and the PEGO, and as we skate to the right, you can see what our fund balance is in this column P. And then you can start to see, once we finance debt at this level, this is when we start using up our fund balance, where we start paying out more than we're, than we're putting into it. And then this is the coverage column that shows that we maintain this 0.25 coverage that's recommended by our financial advisors. So this, this was the old model. I will flip over now to a different model. This is still education. This one was done probably about 10 months ago. This was when we were started talking with Cumberland County Schools and trying to figure out how to meet their needs. And under this model, we increased the debt to $315, 900,000. And under this model, the model itself, prior, the old model, the model could not sustain this level of debt, in other words. And so one of the things that you'll see in this new model is we now would have to, in addition to the lottery monies and the sales tax, we would need to start making a transfer of $7.9 million annually in order to fund the increase in the debt in this model. But that gives some additional funding for education. What you'll see on the flip side of that, of course, is it's going to decrease the amount of funding in your general government model. So I, from my perspective, the decision point that we're, that we're at now, I think, is we have to look at these two models together, if you want to, to increase the amount of funding past $163 million that was originally approved back in the day, because anything that impacts one is going to impact the other. When we did this revised model for education... Ashley, do I have the other models open? Please go. Sorry. I do, I do, I'm sorry, I think I do. Which one is this? Y'all be patient with me, I apologize. Okay, so in order to, when the scenario was brought to me about how to get $315 million into the school model, the education model, I was also told, what if we just stripped everything out of the general government model, it's not water? And so that's what we did in this model. This model used to be, in, in its old day, had several projects, well, you can see them here, they're still here, we've just turned them off. We had Graves Creek Water, we had the parking lot, we had the unhoused support center. We had shown that in this model where you could toggle back and forth, whether to do that as a PEGO or as a finance project. We had the government services center, we had the renovation to the courthouse, and then we have a $70 million water expansion to occur in 2038. And so all of those items were in here. We turned all of those things off and just left the Graves Creek Water turned on and the $70 million water expansion turned on. And so that's kind of the difference between the old model and this model. So there's a lot less debt in this model right now. It's at 115, 115,300,000. Before, it was at 316,300,000 with all the other things in there that were originally on the list of things that we wanted to, that were, there were items of interest to pursue. And so we just stripped all that out and just did water, and, and then did the transfer to the education model of the 7.9 million annually to make that model whole. I think that the amounts that you see in here for just the water model, for the model with just water-only projects, is probably not realistic at all at this point in time. And so again, I think that we would have to, the Commissioners would have to, to decide, you know, how much money they wanted, we wanted to transfer every year into the school model, and then, or would need to prioritize in this model first, if this was the priority, and then, you know, so we would know how much was, be able to transfer to the education model.
So I think we pause for a sec.
Okay.
And, and I'm going to open up some questions because I'm seeing some facial expressions.
Sure.
Commissioner Tyson, then I'll go to Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, just two, two questions. My first one, on the $12 million that you have budgeted for PEGO, walk us through that allocation. Is it part of the infrastructure plan that the school system sent over? Is this kind of planned projects outside of that plan? Just walk us through that $12 million club number that's in there for the P and G.
Right, so, so every year, their board approves their projects, and then if their board approves them, it gets adopted into our budget, and then if they add new projects to it, then we do budget revisions to change our budget, to move, to move with them. But J. Tolan and I, Jay with Cumberland County Schools had been here earlier, I think I lost him. One of the things that he and I talked about that I think is important is that, that PEGO, all of this stuff goes into a debt model, PEGO, debt, current debt payments, future debt payments, whatever is decided that, that we want to pursue. So right now, we've given some flexibility on... So right now, when we've given some flexibility on the PEGO, because they've needed the money to do renovations or repairs, we would have to be very conscientious about making sure that if, we would need to sit down, Jay and I, we would need to sit down and others as well, and decide, okay, we really need to know exactly where we need to cap this PEGO, because we don't want to, we wouldn't want to exceed what our debt model is able to manage as far as debt combined with all those PEGO things that we have going on as well.
So as a follow-up, Mr. Chairman. So in kind of talking around the $53, $55 million, the infrastructure briefing that we got, and it sounds like maybe the $12 million is outside of that, have we had any discussion on, like, project bandwidth and capacity in terms of, let's say we funded the $55, for example, would the school system be in a place where they could get that work completed in that fiscal year realistically, or would it be that if we funded that, they would only be able to get part of that work done? Have we had that conversation? Let's see what the bandwidth is of the project.
The conversation that we've had is the $300 million level. So if we wanted to go below that, in talking with Mr. Tollan, they would need that in tranches of every two years. So it would be a little over $100,000 every two years. So it'd be a six-year process to get through all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams. I just have this one question before we get to the other stuff.
Yes, sir.
Is, as you were talking about dropping off, you got the Grace Creek, the parking deck, the support center, what happened to the E.E. Smith? It was in that model, it was in the old model. So why is it not, even if you drop it, why is it not shown as one of the?
This is the general government model, so the E.E. Smith model is in the education model. So when you look at the, so if you look at the original education model, this one right here, this $163,700,000, in my mind, that's E.E. Smith. And then if you, but I was asked at some point, what if we wanted to do $315 million for the schools? That could be a combination of E.E. Smith and repairs, renovations, or whatever was decided upon by this commission, board commissioners.
That's under the new model?
This is, yes.
Okay, but when you were talking about the old model and dropping stuff, I just don't want it to get lost, I mean, I just don't see it, I don't want it to get lost wherever it is.
And I'm not being clear, and I apologize, we're looking at general government, and then we're looking at education.
But it was in the general government, when they did, when we did it, if you go back to the 20, to the old one, the old model, it was in that one. They may have moved it over.
Not the most recent one, not anything that I've seen since I've been here, but at some point, it probably went from the general government to its own model, I bet is what probably happened.
But who did, I mean, I'm trying to figure out where it happened, or how it happened, because I don't remember, that's both known, to do that.
Yeah, I don't know.
It was always in that model. I think whether you drop it or not, but it was in the model, so I'm just trying to make sure we know where it is. If it's in the old one, it's fine, as long as we know it's in there. I'm just trying to figure out, because it was in, it actually had its own debt model in the one that we did, when we did the debt model from, in the past.
So...
Along with unhoused and all that, it had its own separate.
Column.
I believe, like, when the debt models were set up in 2018, I believe it was, am I correct, Sally, from other ears? I believe there was, I believe there was three models. There was the general, the general model, the education, and then the, and then the...
Crown.
Yes, Crown. Crown. So that's what I was thinking, because some, or maybe, and before then, I was not invited to those meetings, let me say that. I just know when I came into part, there was an education model that was dedicated.
And that's, that's what we're still seeing here, is the three.
And the E.E. Smith was in there.
Was it in this 315?
This 315 was just a conversation where someone said, hey, Robin, if we decided, after listening to, you know, all the needs of Cumberland County Schools, if we wanted to put $315 million into the debt model, if education was our first priority, what would that look like? We could not do that based on the resources that were coming into this model at the time, which is the school tax and the lottery money, we could not make, we could not make this model work. So that's when we said, okay, we've got to start transferring the other general government model into this model in order for it to work.
Okay, I think I can explain it.
Okay.
Okay, the $163,700 model included E.E. Smith in that model, because at the time, E.E. Smith was thought to be around $80 million. So it was part of the $163,700. And so if, if you think about it from that standpoint, the 315 should be just the current amount of schools, right there? Is that just the current amount requested, if we put 315 for the schools in there with their new capital request, I mean, in total? I'm asking a question.
This was the amount that I was asked to put into the model.
Okay, so the schools, the schools, based on their capital needs, said it was 315, if I remember correctly. 315, that number seems, is a little bit more than 315,900, but it's rounded up. I will say that 315 over, if you do it over every other year, $315 million at current interest rates for AA rated bond, AA plus, is 4.4 we have in the Model 5, so there'd be a little bit of savings, but you're looking at 23, almost $24 million eventually per year in debt service for $315 million. And that's for all their capital requests, based on that 315. So that's what I was trying to figure out, but I'm not taking any questions.
No, I was just trying to figure out, so the 315 includes the E.E. Smith?
It would, based on...
Because it was laid out separately for year after year after year, it was in the debt model, laid out separately, just like the Crown, just like every last one of them.
Well, this is, I guess, based on the school's newest capital facility study. So E.E. Smith, I think, would be in there.
Would, I mean, I mean...
Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Adams wants to ask another question, I want to go to Vice Chair.
And when I look at that, I don't think it included that. That's why it was in, that's why it was in the, it was aligned separate. That's what I'm trying to figure out, because that's what we had, it was in the debt model, it's been in the debt model every year.
That's the amount, that's why I was saying, that's the amount for just the new request of 315. Then 163 would be the amount that includes E.E. Smith.
That's it, right.
Wait a minute, wait, I can't, I can't.
The future issue, line H...
We're going to put glasses on.
Yeah, that's the one that includes E.E. Smith.
Everybody talk to me, he's talking to me.
Row H is the future issue that was, the $164 million that was funded towards schools, whether that was new school construction, i.e. Smith, or whatever else, maintenance or whatever, that's what that line is.
You mean the H line?
Yes, the H line.
$16 million?
$164 million allocation.
Wait a minute.
That's your issue right there.
Right.
But I do want to be clear that the debt model, the other debt model, the $315 million debt model, that's not in addition to, that's not another debt model on top of this one that is inclusive of everything that's available unless we start putting more money from gen.gov, from the general government model, into this model. So it's not like, we don't have 315 for R and R, and then 163 for E.E. Smith.
So basically, E.E. Smith has dropped, I mean, I'm just trying...
No, it's just, this is what, the number I was given is what we had, we wanted to see what it looked like to work with. This has not been approved, this has not been discussed, this is, this is just cold information. But if we decided, if you decided 315 was your number, the question was, how much would we have to start moving out of our general government model, and it's just under $8 million every year to make, to make this work? And then you choose the projects.
So how did we get to the 315? Why didn't we just go ahead and add the amount, if we're going to fund it, add the E.E. Smith into the 315, whichever it would come out to, three, whatever it comes out to, and then make sure we got the money to move over?
That was not what I was asked to do, from the scenario standpoint, but I'll, that's the key, is you tell us what you want to see, and we'll run it, and tell you what it looks like.
We'll go to Vice Chair, and just let me explain one thing. So I think the question is, there's $300 million for deferred maintenance, there's approximately $164 million for new school construction. But we have to determine, those are one pot of money. We have to determine if we want to have all those pots, or how much we're going to allocate in what years to new school construction versus deferred maintenance. So I think that's, there's two different things going on. It's one pot of money with new school construction, and that's how I'm going to say it, versus E.E. Smith. But we understand new school construction versus deferred maintenance. School asked for $350 million over seven years, and then they didn't speak to new school construction, but we would earmark X amount of dollars if we're prudent towards new school construction, because when they finish their consulting report, we fully expect to get back that we need a new school at X. And they've already made an ask in previous years for a new school. So we have to determine, how much do we want to allocate towards, in our debt model, towards deferred maintenance and new school? And I'll turn to the Vice Chair, and I've got you coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Adams asked a lot of my questions, but you did state that the reason you did not add in the additional for E.E. Smith is because you were not requested to do so, correct?
I wasn't given any, like, specific project, I was just given a number. So like, if we, if we wanted to try to finance $315 million, what would that look like? And it wasn't associated with any particular, in my mind, here's the money, and then you tell us what you want us to do with it. Or if there's more money that has to happen, then we just know it has to come out of, we want it to come out of the general government model.
I just have a follow-up, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I guess my concern would be that, I don't know about the rest of the board, I'll speak for myself, I would be requesting that then, because I don't want to confuse our listening audience or the committee, and I think that this can get kind of confusing, because respectfully, we do know that we need those other schools, but as they were stating, that was a line item on its own for E.E. Smith. So for me, I would still want that to be what it would look like with that specific school that has been in a lot of discussion, along with, you know, no doubt, that doesn't take from this. So that would be definitely something that I would want to see what that number would look like. And then also, one more question. You stated that $163 million was approved for their budget, correct? But what was their overall, for our listening audience, amount that they asked for, overall of what the county wanted as far as school system? I heard you earlier say that $163 million has already been approved, is that not correct?
Well, $163 million was what was, was what was in the original debt model that the former board was using in their decision-making.
And we're not saying that we're going to change that, though. Is that why, I mean, that's still, unless we vote to rechange it.
Totally, yeah.
But 163 has been approved.
It's, I don't want to say it's been approved, it's been the working model the board was going by prior to. There's not been, like, a budget ordinance or anything like that that's been submitted, nothing official has happened, it's been, this is what we were looking at, or what was being looked at at the time, and that's what's been carried forward.
Okay. And I will be requesting that the staff, with that number put in for E.E. Smith, a request, mine is when the commissioners here, I'm going to want to need to see what those numbers look like. Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is, the 315,900 is just a planning tool, nothing from staff has changed, the board has to vote to change everything. And then like I said, the 163,700 was the original amount for new schools that we've been working with, because E.E. Smith was in there, and I think some years, a few years back, it was $80 million, and there was a presentation done by CCS, and I'm just estimating, but if I remember correctly, the price for E.E. Smith had gone up to about $120 million. And so that's, but that was considered in that 163,700. This amount right here is really represents planning tool for the deferred maintenance amount that was presented early in the year, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Adams.
So I guess my question would be, excuse me?
No, I'm just saying, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is probably about it. So we talk about what the debt model can sustain, but does, have we, does that consider how we do the financing, whether it's bonds, whether it's go, so that number is, I'm just trying to figure out how we do that, because if we tell the school system, we throw the bond, and y'all help us sell it to the people, it's a different, it's a different debt model than if you do...
Labs.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, and I will not stand up here and try to pretend like I'm a dead expert, because I'm new at all this, and I'm learning as I'm going with our experts, but from what I understand, the geo-bond, there's no collateral that's required, that's just based off of the taxpayer's ability to pay back, but if we want to do the labs, that's where you have to have some collateral with your R and R. And so if you did a, you'd have to, if you build a school, then that would be your collateral for your R and R that's part of the model as well. So, yeah, it really depends on how you approach it, as to, you know, how it works out.
So the debt model, so when we say that, we're not basing on how we financing it. So the debt model could be more or less according to how you finance it, okay?
If I remember correctly, I think the county, what we're trying to, try to levy some federal dollars, lobbying for some federal dollars.
No, we would lobby in state dollars.
I just remember that piece to the county manager.
Yeah, as far as the debt model is concerned, it's just based on a rate, a bond, depending on what, the bond at 5%. I will say that if we do general obligation bonds, you get a lower interest rate. If you do limited obligation bonds, although you're going to have to have capital or collateral with it, generally, the percentage rate is higher, and you'll incur a higher amount of debt for it. For something of this magnitude, we will probably need to have another meeting moving forward, it would be my recommendation to the board that we look at general obligation, because the more that you go, it's kind of hard to structure a deal properly when you have limited obligation at that level.
And thank county manager. I don't, I don't want to confuse the conversation around...
No, I'm...
I know, I understand, and thank you for the explanation. I want to stay on, the focus is, as we look to make an investment in education. We say education's a priority, water's a priority, we have our different priorities. As a board, we have to decide, and what I think I'm hearing is, so the school board came and requested $350 million against deferred maintenance. We also see a commitment for new school construction. So if you take $300 million towards deferred maintenance, which is kind of the model they ran here, and then you add in the 160 that we previously had, rough numbers, you'd have about 460 that we are looking, that we as a board would say, that's the debt that we want to look at making investment in our schools. And then our staff would then run those models. And I will say that, because the caveat is, then we have to go back and look at water and general government. And so what are we going to fund first? And so if the direction from the board, I think what I'm hearing is 300 for deferred maintenance, and earmark at whatever year, talk to Jay, talk to the school board, if it's 2027, 28, on where we budget the new school, go ahead and create that other line that adds $164 million against the school, because I think it's important this board sees the impact in where we're going to prioritize our dollars. And that would accommodate, and certainly have new schools that we, that the board has talked about, as well as the investment in the deferred maintenance that is behind.
Commissioner...
Mr. Tyson was... Sorry, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things when we, when we were presented with the comprehensive facility review that we had asked the school board about was if they were going to look towards any sort of facility consolidation, because we saw that the usage of those facilities varied greatly. And it's my understanding, and this is kind of my question to the county manager, but it's my understanding that the school board is still working on that, we haven't gotten that... We haven't gotten that back. So given that we haven't gotten that back, it would be likely that maybe some of the schools that we were looking to fund in 315, or some of the facilities, rather, that we were looking to fund in 315, that money may be reallocated because that facility may be sunsetting. Would that be a, would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, it'd be a fair assessment. And I think, once we talk about this as a board commission and we work with the school system, the number, I would think, will change. It will go up and down depending on inflation and interest rates and things of that nature. And that creates, you know, the capacity, maybe to finance. So, yeah, it could go up and down. I would anticipate if they go consolidate or redistrict, for lack of a better term, that number really should go down.
So let me add a point of information because it was at that meeting, because we specifically asked about that. The total deferred maintenance cost that they provided to us in a very detailed report was $860 million. They said $350 million over seven years. They're in a six-month process to repurpose and redistrict. They've got about two months left. The question we asked them is, even if you do that, that's why they asked for the 350, because the line, the items may change, the deferred maintenance schedule may change, but the dollar amount's not going to change. Because even if they, and this is their words at that meeting, and as a follow-up meeting that I spoke to the chairwoman about, as well as the finance lead commissioner, is that the need is still going to be the need, and that's why they came up with the reduced 350 over seven years, because it met the deferred maintenance need. Now, we could say 300 because that's all we could do right now, or we could set it at whatever, to get a balance of new construction and deferred maintenance. And I'll add that, and then I'll open the floor back up. I believe Commissioner Adams, you're next.
And I'll have a problem, if it's over seven years, if we budget that, you know, I just want to make sure what's in that budget, but because those numbers may change, just like you say, Commissioner Tyson, I don't... But if we got the amount, then we don't really worry about up or down, you do worry about going up, but don't worry about coming down. So if that's the amount to be budgeted, along with that $163, we're good, I think.
So again...
Thank you, Chairman.
So again, going back, I think what I'm hearing from the board is we want to look at a 300 deferred maintenance and a 160, let's just keep round terms, a 160 new construction number.
So that would be 350, 300 in deferred maintenance over seven years? Is that what you're...
Over seven years.
And then 160 for a new school.
For new school construction. It could be two, it could be... New school construction. That way, then as it's funded, we earmark new school construction.
I thought it was $163 million.
It's $163. I just rounded it. We dropped the 300s. I just kind of dropped it. They'll give us round numbers.
Okay. And I talked to Doug this morning, too, and he said, once we kind of have an idea, he'll be glad to come down here and work with our team, our staff team, to get those models regenerated for everybody.
And again, board, I think it's important that we look at where we're prioritizing. So we have this debt model, we have a water debt model, which we haven't talked about yet, water and sewer debt model, and then we have the general government, that we're doing some other pieces of that as well. So, just for situational awareness. Any other questions on this piece? So we've got consensus and direction on this one. What are you moving, what are we moving to next? That was the school.
Yeah.
Even though we moved into the debt model, which is item four.
I was trying to figure out where we were.
But it's hard to talk education without talking to debt model. They're going to, they're going to get blinded a little bit.
Agreed. Did you want to start back at number three, capital investment fund, five-year capital improvement plan?
I think we keep moving through the capital investment. Because of the 106, I think we keep moving through the capital investment. And then if we need to dip back to the debt model on general government, we can. But I think if we have any additions or changes in the debt model, we'll address those in item four, when we get to item four. If we want to remove anything, add anything, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to Deborah Shaw.
To begin, it's important to clarify that the capital improvement plan, maintenance and repairs, technology, debt service, and future projects for the general government is funded through the capital investment fund, not your general fund operating account. Each year, $18,676,000 is transferred from the general fund to the capital investment fund to support these projects. It's also important to note that the Crown CIP, the Solid Waste CIP, and the Water and Sewer CIP are not included in the capital investment fund. Instead, they are accounted for within their respective enterprise funds. You may be wondering how the $18,676,000 transfer was determined. When Cumberland County established the capital investment fund with guidance of our financial advisors, the transfer amount was based on the level of debt service that had been projected to be paid from the general fund at that time. Additionally, $500,000 in debt service is funded annually from the Health Department's fund balance. This funding methodology can be referenced in the 2018 adopted budget book. The above chart is the breakdown of the capital investment fund recommended expenditures. These were brought forward for discussion and presentation at the Finance Committee. FTCC's capital request was $11,500. They had requested $10,250,000 above their FY '25 adopted budget. $250,000 was deferred maintenance, and $10 million was a request for funding to match the funding being requested by the General Assembly to replace Cumberland Hall. The amount that was programmed into the debt model was $1.3 million, and this was the amount recommended for the FY 2026 budget based on the financial model. What makes up the preliminary capital? $9,000 design of a government services center, 7.5 for the Civil War Museum, $450,000 for the African-American Museum, and this will be an adjustment because when the book was printed, it was $450,000. $277,813 has been paid, so the new budget reflected will be $172,187. 2.5 for international farmers market, $2 million for a regional park, $300,000 for planning and design for future projects. And also, this will be an adjustment of $507 for invoice that Assistant Manager Phillips has received, that someone did some work for a future, a potential future site for the farmers market. $200,000 for the Spring Lake Parks and Rec. And again, this will be an adjustment because $147,214 worth of invoices have been paid for Menaza Park. Any questions on this before we move to CIP?
Yes, back to you, please. Vice Chairman Jones, your advice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you repeat what you stated about in regards to the farmers market? What was that amount?
It was $507. They had went out to visit a site. Assistant Manager Phillips, would you like to speak on that?
Absolutely. We received an invoice from a surveying firm in town. They went out to a location to do a site survey, like floodplain, that type of thing, and it was an invoice for those services that was rendered to our engineering department.
And that full amount was for that assessment?
It was $506.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions on this? So you rattled through a few of the projects. Those projects were under the debt service, correct?
Preliminary capital, no, they've, well, I don't know if they're in the debt model. They've already been budgeted in our annual, in our annual budget, preliminary items.
Those are cash. Those are cash.
Yeah.
What were the items under preliminary capital?
It was $9 million to start the design of a government services center, 7.5 for the Civil War Museum, $450,000 for the African-American Museum, and again, there will be an adjustment, 2.5 for the international farmers market, $2 million for a regional park, $300,000 for planning and design for future projects, and then $200,000 for the Spring Lake Parks and Rec.
So map those back on, so some of those you see in the pay-as-you-go plans, some of them you don't. So where are all those? Or maybe you could just provide us a list of those, because if we approve this CIP, that means we're approving those items moving forward.
These items have been...
Because those are, those are, those are dollars that have not been spent yet on some of those projects.
On the, yes, on the 7.5 Civil War Museum.
Yeah.
That, $450,000, there has been some money spent, and we're reimbursing the invoices. But 2.5, nothing has been spent on the international farmers market, $2 million for the regional park, $300,000 was placed for planning and design. And I think that was in case someone needed to go out there at the board's direction to be looking at some preliminary site. We don't have to, the money is already budgeted.
Vice Chairman Jones, I'll go to Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Tyson.
Okay, thank you. So you stated that there will be some readjustments. Can you give us like that later, a breakdown, like for instance, when you said the, using the 2.5 million for the, in other words, so we'll know what's been spent and what's not? I know you're making an adjustment, but for example, the MLK Museum, $450,000, are you saying that's going to be an adjustment, meaning there's already been money spent in that, and if so, how much? I guess that's what I'm learning.
When I had, when this was budgeted in the, when the recommended budget came out, I had $450,000. There has been some invoices that have been paid. So I would be over, I would be leading y'all wrong telling you, because I'd be overstating your budget.
Okay, I got you.
Same thing for the 507, I would be overstating.
So you'd be giving, after the invoice, there'll be another, you'll give us the...
Yeah, it would be $172,187 that's left remaining to be paid on the African-American Museum.
Anything else, Vice Chairman?
No, I was just trying to figure out where I'm starting with this.
So I'll make sure I understand when you say budgeted, because those were voted on, the 7.5 for the Civil War and designated for that. The same thing for, so even though when you're talking about budget, they've already been voted on by a board, and they're just there to be paid out.
To be paid out, yes, sir, that is correct. Except for the $300,000, that's just preliminary design. International farmers market, I mean, these were just pleasures of the board, but nothing has been paid on the international farmers market and the regional park, and the, yeah, regional park.
So, Commissioner.
But they were voted on, and it's in the budget because it's already passed.
Yes, it was in last year's budget, you are correct.
So it's just carried over to this budget, so it's already, it's already been voted on.
But Miss Shaw, as a point, just like we're looking at prioritizing the debt model, the CIP can be adjusted as well.
Yeah, this is your recommend, this is, we're just carrying this through for the recommended budget, because the dollars have not been spent yet.
Just, just to make it clear. Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. So that leads me back, you left out the $9 million for the government services, were you saying we've already spent the $9 million?
No, there's still money there. It's just a preliminary, and...
It's $9,000.
$9,000, I'm sorry, $9,000.
She said nine the first time. She said $9,000, then she said $9 million.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, $9,000.
And then, secondly, I know the maintenance and repair section of the budget, last year I saw that we had $866,000. Did we get all those projects completed from last year's budget?
When we get there, I have someone, Jeremy Stefanka, that can answer those questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when you stated, so I want to make sure I'm not confused, some of this money, though, like you said, it was pre-approved, like the Civil War Museum, we've already allocated that, though, to the individuals that we would say are going to use it then, all right? Or we just, help me understand that?
I haven't budgeted. I did not know if it, has anything came forward, Rick, or...
Yes, they have, they have proposed a contract now, just in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Have a comment or a question, I'm not sure, on the Civil War Museum. Just remembering back in time, we made, we made our commitment, contention on the city coming through with theirs, I believe, and also the state coming through with theirs. I wonder how those, those allocations are going. Have they, have the city come through with $7.5 million also, or do we not?
They have.
I'll let the County Manager or whoever opine on that.
I'll have to come back with that number to find out for sure, but I do know construction has started. I'll have to find out and bring that back.
My understanding is they've drawn down some of that money, and they've drawn down, they've drawn down the state money as well, which is, I won't, I won't add commentary to that one, but they've drawn down, they've drawn down, I believe, part of the city money, but they've drawn down the state money.
And I think that, Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, that 7.5 wasn't all cash. Part of it was the land and some of the other stuff they had, but it came up to 7.5, whatever they did.
Other questions on CIP before we move forward? Sure. Okay, all right.
An overview of the proposed '26 through 2030 capital improvement plan is attached. In totals, $2,615,000 of recommended projects for the FY 2026 for the capital investment fund. Each file, county departments, what page?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, I'm sorry.
Ty's calling the manager.
Thank you. Each file, county departments submit the CIP request for the upcoming fiscal year. These submissions are initially reviewed by their respective county manager and the Director of Engineering and Infrastructure. Following this, the proposed projects are presented to a scoring panel composed of key department heads and members of the county management team. During the evaluation process, the panel has the opportunity to ask questions and gather additional information about each project. Panel members then individually score these projects based on established criteria and submit their completed scoring sheets to the Budget and Performance Department. The scoring criteria is broken down into seven categories: strategic plan alignment, safety hazards, other funding availability such as grants, state or federal mandates, maintenance of existing assets, efficiency, cost avoidance, and service improvement. The scores were compiled and used to prioritize projects for the recommendation in the recommended budget, as well as for the remaining four years of the CIP planning cycle. And Jeremy Stefanka is here if you have any questions regarding any of the capital projects.
Commissioners, questions on the capital projects? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Same question reiterated previously. Did we complete all the capital projects for FY '25?
Jeremy, would you like to come over here and speak?
Do you think M and R projects?
Correct.
So I can figure out the M and R, we had...
Jeremy, can you come up to the front, please, so you're, the audience can hear you, and we can hear you.
And they're talking CIP, M and R, not M and R.
Yeah. Let me see, I should text. So we had a total of 37 total CIP projects, 13 complete, 21 were in the process, three we did not get to at all.
I have two, I think, Mr. Chairman, two questions. You stated there were three projects that you did not get to, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's my first question, and so by chance, what are those three projects, and what was the amount on those? Just out of curiosity.
Just give me one second, sorry, I'm looking, trying to find my notes. So one was the law enforcement parking deck.
And what was the price on that?
One million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And another one was the historic courthouse elevator mod.
And the price on that?
Two hundred and eighty thousand. And we were actually putting that one off, because we had to do the switchgear prior to doing, get to that one.
Okay. And the last one?
And the other one was the detention center coolant towers.
The what now?
Detention center coolant towers.
How much was that?
One seventy-five.
I'm listening on, is any of that happening?
A hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I'm sorry, just one more question then.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess then, because those would be that, no doubt, approval through us, like the law enforcement parking lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so those are things you just have to wait for the board to get to approving before you can see about looking into that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What would happen is, because the projects were not done, that would be brought back to the board, because at June thirtieth, that would have to be, asked to be reimagined, the funds for, someone puts it back in the timeline of August, September, October, to the full board.
So correctly, it would have to come to the board?
Yes.
Before they do these projects?
And the contract also.
Okay. Thank you, Senator.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Patel.
Thanks, Jerry, I got a quick question, so with the outstanding projects that you started, and the ones that haven't begun yet, and the FY twenty-six projects that you've identified, do you think you'll be able to get all of the twenty-five projects completed, plus handle the twenty-six, or do we potentially need to restructure this priority list?
Basically, we're hit into that new fiscal year, we'll hit the remaining twenty-five, those will be priority first, and then we jump on the next years. We try to hit all of them, unfortunately, currently now, we're kind of understaffed a little bit, but we're trying to get to all of them. That's the goal.
So, I completely agree, I think that'd be the goal, but looking at FY twenty-five and staffing issues from everywhere you look, if we're going to potentially vote to approve these projects on this year's budget coming up, and then we may have to de-budget for divisions from a capacity standpoint, from, you know, your team, do you think you'll be able to get everything done? Because we may be able to hold some projects off and save some money.
Yeah, I would say, honestly, in my opinion, doing this, I would say, no, we could not complete all of them.
All the department heads are very happy to be right now.
Yeah.
Commissioner Patel.
Oh, I mean, would you have any recommendations on, looking at the, I don't want to call them leftover projects, but FY twenty-five projects and FY twenty-six, as an aggregate, if you put them together, would you have like a better prioritization list from a timeline? And I know safety's obviously first, and?
Absolutely. It could definitely be prioritized a little more, based off of that, for sure.
As we move forward with hiring for a new engineer for the engineering department, we're doing additional evaluation of these projects, and bring them forward, bring back a recommendation. I would say that these are all in one fund, so they're already in fund balance, there's no really, other than the transfer from the general fund, there's no, really no concern about if the project, budgetary concern if the project didn't move forward, and I don't say not move forward, but if it's carried over from one budget year to the next. And we, and it's part of the evaluation, that's one of the things that's evaluated at the time that we start, is that, do we have the capacity to get these projects started and completed within one to two years?
Mike Sherman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to make you go through all thirteen, but just, can you list some of those that you did, you did say you all completed thirteen, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me about maybe three or four that's been completed?
From the CIP?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And what the cost was, and, you know, just the work that's already been done?
I believe someone asked my staff of what the figure was for FY twenty-five actuals that had been done, for the actuals as paid invoices.
Right.
Eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and then we also had encumbrances of one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars on some of the FY twenty-five projects.
Thank you.
So, ma'am, we did get the LEC switchgear and the historic courthouse switchgear replacement complete, each of those were three hundred and fifty thousand. We also did complete the detention center pneumatic control upgrades. And then the floor building HVAC replacements. That was forty-six thousand, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, thank you for looking that up, because I wanted to see that perhaps you all, and it sounds like that's what you're doing, building this repair and maintenance and things that definitely are a priority, and to keep that at the function of the building, so you've given me three good examples, and just want to keep that community informed, and again, that sounds like those are definitely priorities, if you're doing things like AVAC, which is air conditioning, and things that are going to maintenance-wise, that keeps the overall operations of the building functioning for those, you know, the community has to be able to go into these specific facilities, so thanks so much.
Yes, ma'am.
You answered my question.
Commissioner Tyson, you recognize round two?
Thank you, and I want to thank Ms. Shaw for her and her staff for getting that number so handy, handy for us, and that kind of goes back to my point, Mr. Chairman, in FY twenty-five, our total adopted CIP was the five million, two hundred thousand for the county, and an additional one hundred and twenty-five for that, or in the DSS budget. Based upon the numbers that Ms. Shaw has provided, the accounted and spent amount is two million, five hundred and twenty thousand, which I think goes back to Commissioner Patel's point of, that leaves roughly two point six million dollars of money that was, that was budgeted, a project we didn't get completed. So, again, I would, I would look to, if we're, if we're still going to be, you know, completing some of the FY twenty-five budgets, us taking a realistic look on, can we get all these projects completed in this fiscal year, and do we need, does this board need to look at making a realistic adjustment to that budget amount based upon that? That's my question or request, or however you want to put it, Mr. Chairman.
And I apologize, Amanda Lee is here, and she's been kind of overseeing the engineering stuff, and I apologize, Amanda, if you have anything that you need to say.
Well, I just, I just wanted to add that some of these projects, some of these projects that have been budgeted, like parking deck repairs, as we get into more of the evaluation, we realize that I did something on you. Now, we've got like budgeted one point, just, just one example of like one point two, five million dollars, and as we're getting into the structural evaluation, we realize that may not even touch it. So some of these repairs, we're not fully budgeted, and that's why they've not moved forward. So I think a reassessment of how far we got this year is probably in order, and what didn't get done, why it didn't get done, that's just one example. There, there are reasons for several of them, but a reevaluation's probably a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Mike Sherman, you recognize round two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for explaining that, because I guess my concern is, just like, for instance, I know we stated when we went over things about construction and repairs before, elevators know about, you know, doubt, like they were stating, they cost a lot, number one, but it's not even just the issue of the elevators, it's just finding someone that can put those in because of the type of work, and then with the social services, when we do do the reevaluation, I'm glad she brought that up, there are, you know, other factors, it doesn't mean still not needed, and I use the elevators as one of those, those type of things, and I, I keep hearing that, from what you educated us before, it's not a field where you have a lot of people that are skilled in that trade, number one, and then as you say, the price of elevators that continue to go up, the longer that we're in need of it, because it's just a limited skill set, where we know they need to be done, but there's only so many people that have that skill set. So I think we just need to be mindful, like sometimes it's better to, as she was saying, Amanda, did we overbudget it? I mean, it's fine to reassess, but let's make sure the reason, you know, why, and elevators isn't going to be, you know, that you explained that it's going to be done, but you just don't have enough people in the field to do it, so.
Yes, ma'am, I will say as well, too, with the elevators, we haven't been happy with some of the past engineering services we had, and we, we got a lot of elevators, so we're actually looking at different options for design and that such stuff.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, anything else? So a quick question on this, county manager, is part of this budget process, this reeval of existing projects, is that part of the budget process, so we would have captured this number and had some decision points at the staff level before it comes to the board?
Yes, but just as Mr. Stefanko said, due to the number of vacancies that we have currently, that has caused us a pause, so we always look at each project, and some of these, and I didn't have to go back through, but some of them were, they were budgeted in previous fiscal years, we moved out additional year when we did the Capital Improvement Plan, because we knew we weren't going to be able to get to it. So that evaluation will be done as we move forward. Now, if the board wants us to go back and reevaluate what we have this current year's budget, and see what we can move out based on the projects, you said there's three that were not done, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the three that are not done have to deal with public safety, and part of it has to do with just having the time to coordinate schedule with the, and the evaluation of the cost, as Amanda said, so I would just say that we can bring that back, but I would say for this budget, if there's something that we need to bring back on Thursday, we can.
So it's a two-part question, so we heard from Ms. Lee that there's projects that are potentially underestimated, because these are estimates when they go in, and then when you get into the work, so if the reeval was done during the staff process of the budget, then would those have been identified? Because, here's my point, I don't think you're going to have enough time to look at those reeval before Thursday, so I, I think the question would be, then it would need, if we approve this as is, there's a do-out, that if there's changes pending that reevaluation, you can give us a timeframe for that reevaluation and adjustment, that then we would do a budget amendment to adjust the CIP?
Yeah, we, we always do that, just like she mentioned on the Sheriff's Parking Deck. Once we find that out, that's a prime example, let's say we start that project, and we find out that the scope and the dollar amount estimate, then we would have to bring that back and get it approved, the budget amendment approved, and that's part of the ongoing evaluation as we start the project. Now, to your second, your other question, yes, we would bring that back, probably sit down with the current staff, go through everything again, and bring that back, probably the first big, I would say, agenda session, I would say in August.
So I just wanted to be clear, I understand budget amendments and how they work and how they come forward. I just want to be clear on, so we need to reevaluate the current projects, identify any of the shortcomings, you're going to bring that back to us in August, along with any, if we approve this budget as is, then we're going to see a budget amendment that will adjust the CIP based on the 2025 reevaluation of the projects, as well as any shift that you have to make to 2026 projects, because of the carryover of the 2025 projects?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make sure that's captured, and that we, okay. Any other questions on CIP? All right.
Sir, if I could just say one more thing to you, when I say the three projects are not done, that's the ones that have not been touched at all, there are other projects not complete, but they're in the process, they're either with financing or working specs on them.
Thank you, again, we just need the reevaluation, to make sure we know which projects we're going to move forward, if there's additional cost, under-cost, and then make those adjustments in twenty-six as I outlined, and then bring that back to us in August, along with any budget amendments, so that we can have an accurate plan on what we're spending on capital investment, and understand the shortfalls or the shortcomings.
We're going to start with Mr. Chairman, because he could have saved us all that time.
In due respect, we'll let the commissioners answer questions.
All right, an overview of the maintenance and repairs for FY twenty-twenty-six for the Capital Improvement Fund is shown on the next two slides, in totals, one million, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars of proposed projects. Items in the attached list were requested by various departments and vetted by the Internal Services Department. Projects are listed in priority order by safety, end-of-service life, and preventive maintenance. The debt model allocates one million each year for maintenance and repairs. We talked to the financial advisors to make sure that thirty-nine thousand, five hundred would not hurt us going over, and it would not, because there is also a net savings of nine hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. The reason why is because the projects that have a star beside it, they should really, we put them in the departmental's budget so that we can get drawdown and get the most dollars for our, for our, the most bang for our buck. Is there any questions? If so, Jeremy Stefanka can answer anything with maintenance and repairs.
So I'll go ahead and start this time and just say, the same line of question that we had on the CIP, are there projects that need to be reevaluated for this maintenance and repairs for 2025, that we can do the same thing with, bring those back in August and make any adjustments? I don't need a line-by-line item of, I just, is there, are there items that are not completed?
Yes, sir.
And by the end of, any that we need to reevaluate, so we can do the same procedure that we went through with the CIP? Commissioners, any other questions, you want any other details on any of the maintenance that may not be done? Commissioner?
I'm just looking at the, that. Because there is also a net savings of $944,500. The reason why is because the projects that have a star beside it, they should really, we put them in the departmental's budget so that we can get drawdown and get the most dollars for our, the most bang for our buck. Is there any questions? If so, Jeremy Stefanko can answer anything with maintenance and repairs.
So, I'll go ahead and start this time and just say, the same line of question that we had on the CIP, are there projects that need to be reevaluated for this maintenance and repairs for 2025 that we can do the same thing with, bring those back in August and make any adjustments? I don't need a line-by-line item of, I just, are there items that are not completed?
Yes, sir.
And by the end of, any that we need to reevaluate, so we can do the same procedure that we went through with the CIP? Commissioners, any other questions? You want any other details on any of the maintenance that may not be done?
I'm just looking at that bottom line, number 40. What was that?
$944,500.
No, $4,500 for the employee garden. Because we're trying to leave these people well, we couldn't do the lighting, because some people want to go out there at night, it's hot, it's hot right about now, it's about 90 degrees during the daytime, they talk about going out there and doing that little lighting for $4,500 to be able to help. I know Commissioner Tyson's been out there to back, because I have been, too. But it is, it was 90, it was 97 degrees today, 100 degrees. $4,500 to do a little bit of lighting out there?
And we can, sir, we could probably bring that up in next year's budget, out of our M&R budget, too, we could probably.
When he brings it back in August is what he's talking about.
Yes, sir. For the budget.
It's going to have to be some convincing, because the pen is tight.
Mr. Manager, I think it may be a little bit tighter on this side of the table recently, so. Commissioner Adams, anything else?
No, I didn't get my $4,500, so the commissioner tied it. At least I had Commissioner Patel saying this.
We are at the point where the commission can make recommendations.
Can I get my $4,500?
It's at $4,500.
No, he didn't, he didn't budget it over there. No, seriously, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm being serious, Mr. Adams.
But it is. I didn't ask that for the $4,500, because I mean, right about now, because I don't even go out there until I get home, it's hot out there, and if we're going to have a garden for people to be able to use, they ought to be able to use that, and to be able to do some lighting out there, I think it's something that we should look at, and I would request that.
If it's the board's pleasure, Mr. Stefanko said he could find money in this year's budget.
Well, it's just a request that we had then as we move forward. So, I think we're going to look at all the requests, once we kind of sit down and determine which ones are approved and which ones aren't, to move forward in the budget as we go. So, that's a request that we've got, just like some of the ones we had last meeting. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But you're saying we put it in request now, right? I agree for that, I mean, that's certainly, and it's not a lot of money for, we've got to take care of our people, so. And they're out there every day, so it's less than $5,000, so.
Anything else on maintenance and repairs? So, we're going to make a note for commission requests, add $4,500 for line 46 for employee garden. All right.
Technology. Each year, departments submit technology requests. The innovation and technology services department conducts a high-level review in collaboration with the requesting department, assesses security, alignment with the county's infrastructure, and compatibility with the application portfolio. This feedback is then provided to the scoring panel. The scoring panel is comprised of county management, with representation from ITS, budget, and finance. The panel evaluates and prioritizes each request based on strategic alignment, mandates, security, cost avoidance, benefit realization, and timeline. Final prioritization is determined by a total score tallied by budget. An overview of technology requests is shown on the next few slides. The recommendation for technology for FY 2026 is $1,560,192 for capital investment fund. The debt model allocated $1,750,000 for technology needs, so we stayed within the budget. And if anyone has any questions, the director's not here, but we can try to answer.
So, I think we would have the same question we had on the previous, what's been completed, what's the reconciliation of the previous year compared to this year, and then bring that back to us in August. Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, and I know everybody else has probably gotten the same thing I have, citizens say they just can't see us on TV, they can't hear us on TV, I didn't see anything in this technology. I would think that, and I'm not going to recommend an amount or whatever, but if we can have staff look at doing that, they tell us, oh, the city, we can see, we can hear, you all.
$118,000.
And hear, both of them, I think. Huh? It's where?
Number six.
Number six, let me see, what's number six?
Switcheroo, number 118, $36,589.
But is that what's going to do it on TV? I mean, that's where the people are watching it, and I don't watch it, I'm a little bit hurt my eyes, too. But they said they can't hear us, they can't, they can see us, but I guess they can see that a lot. So, I'm not asking for the amount, but I'm just asking whether, if staff can look at bringing something back in this budget to be able to upgrade our whole broadcast, because it's just, people talk about it all the time, they like to see me on the TV.
We'll bring that back as part of the August evaluation, if we can get it encumbered using this year's funding, we'll try to use it, we'll try to do the evaluation, do that. We only have, like, three weeks, so it's going to probably be hard to do, but we'll bring that back as part of the evaluation in August.
And I don't know what it, I don't know what that entails, so I'm not rushing, I'm just like, I just want to put that on the table, because people have said it, it might take you longer than that to figure out that whole broadcasting spectrum and all of that, but I just think it's something that should be on our radar, because people should really talk about that.
So, could we bring it back as a work session item for an update in what we have, what our enhancements could be, and what our options are for kind of good, better, best, or something like that?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Come back in August.
Yes, we bring that part, yes, we'll bring that back in August.
As a work session item. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And can you include not just 118, this room as well, the scope of both, for their information? If possible, to research that?
If I could have the pleasure of the board, it would be my thought that we need to evaluate all, also in social services and also health. But I would start with this building first, since we have, we use, you know, the public wants to see us in this room and in 118.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, and don't forget about, I do serve on the social service board, there's issues over there, you're right, and as well as I'm on the board over there at Public Health Department, so that would be great, because we have concerns over there as well.
Other items for technology, Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question, did our county clerk get her Adobe Pro on this?
Yes, she did.
Commissioner Patel is looking at.
He take it.
I have a question. More wheels, Jen.
We are on item three, and at 7:30, I'm going to ask the pleasure of the board, we'll take a recess and say we want to continue. So, we are on item three, C3.
Okay. Debt service. An overview of the proposed FY 2026 debt payments is shown for the capital investment fund. The FY 2026 debt payments is approximately $8.5 million. The Crown complex and water and sewer debt payments will be shown within the enterprise funds. Do y'all have any questions?
Questions on the debt service, commissioners? Okay, I think that takes us through all of item three, correct?
Yes, sir.
Preliminary capital, when you went through the CIP.
Yes, sir, I've touched on everything except, and then it's the debt model and other funds.
And one item on the preliminary capital, if you could just send us a list, we rattled off kind of what was in that, if we can just email the board those items. Okay, board, it's almost 7:30, we've been going for two hours, my goal was two to three hours tonight to get through, but I want to be respectful of the board and the wishes of the board. If we could get through the debt model, I don't know if we can get through the debt model, because that's going to speak to, we've got two debt models to get through to include major projects, so we can take a short recess for 10 minutes and then push to 8:30 for another hour, if that's the will of the board, or we can, if we're going to break, this is a logical breakpoint, because the debt model, as we saw with the education, is going to be a conversation, not that we have to make decisions, but we need to look at what we want to allocate, because all three of them are going to work together. And the water, we haven't touched on, and we know that's a priority of this board, and then you still have general government, so.
I'd like to come back, I'd like to break and come back, it's been a long day for me, I'm sorry.
So, we have, just as a point, and let me cut you off, Commissioner Adams, but just as a point, we have two more meetings scheduled. I'm glad to schedule additional meetings, but my goal, or my hope, was that we would use Thursday night as our meeting to probably finish the community support, or have the community support, and then flush out any to get consensus on all the commissioner requests. So, where are we going to be on debt models, where are we going to be on what we're funding education, some of the other requests that have come in, and then vote the budget on Tuesday night. If we break now, we're going to add another, and it's fine if we break, I have no problem, I understand people have work schedules. If we break now, then we probably just need to look that we're going to add another budget workshop. And we have time before the end of the year. So, I'll open it up for discussion, Commissioner Adams.
And, Mr. Chairman, so we're going to meet on Thursday, and I don't know how long the.
It's going to be a long day Thursday.
No, the agenda says, is that?
Long.
Okay. I was talking about moving it up.
We're going to get, you're going to get two hours on Thursday, because we're going to come out of at least a two-hour work session. We have multiple presentations, we also have a closed session where we're talking personnel, we've got, this is going to be, and there's a media agenda as well. So, we're going to have two hours, we're going to have two hours there, so if we break now, which is fine, again, we're just going to need to be prepared to add a Thursday or another date following Tuesday or somewhere in between there. Vice Chairman, and then Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we, oh, I see you're saying we're going to add another meeting, I don't know if people feel like doing this, or might be in their schedule. If we consider that, could we move up the time for the budget for Thursday?
There really isn't, because of the work session from three, it's probably going to be two hours, I mean, we could, I mean, we could move it to four if we wanted to, to give us another hour, but you're going to be going four to five to 7:30, but we can't.
Do you have an open meeting, I mean, what's called it by moving it up, since you've done it?
We can, we can renotice it, because we don't have 48 hours.
That's what I'm saying.
We don't have 48 hours.
We don't have 48 hours.
So, we'd end up doing one on the 13th, or you'd move to the 16th, we have a meeting, depending on that agenda, we could, you could wrap something in behind that, if you wanted to.
The 16th of June.
The 16th of June. And our last budget workshop was scheduled for the 17th, is that right?
19.
19.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I'd be fine if we take a quick recess and come back, and I'll stay with you as long as you want to stay tonight. So, I'll move through as much information as you want to, you want to be here until 10 o'clock tonight, I'm fine. So, I just want to make sure the board knows what my position is.
That's right. And I'm hearing from, I'm hearing from a couple that we want to look to, I just want to be, we need to schedule another two-block, two-hour block window, if we want to do that. Does everybody, or do you want to keep pushing through tonight?
I can stay another hour.
And I can, too, but we got staff who worked all day today, and they got families, I mean, that's my whole thing, is to think about, what we do is what we do, but, and then they have to be back here again tomorrow morning, get ready for, I mean, all of that is what I take into account.
I just say, this is like my taxes.
So, what I would recommend, then, is what we can look at.
Yeah, I was just going to, yeah, and some of these women, you know, women have children at home, and husbands at home, and all of that, so kids, and so I recommend, too, like, I can stay, but the staff, you know, have other, some people have other commitments to their families and things.
So, what I would recommend, if we're going to break, we go ahead and plan for the 17th at 5:30, and we do a 5:30 to 7:30 on the 17th.
You can move it up a little bit, really, I don't have, 5:30 doesn't necessarily mean anything.
We have, we have a reset.
We can, yeah, we can.
Sally's retirement.
There's an event scheduled from 3:00 to 5:00.
Oh, is it? Fine, look at that day, but, oh, I got too many calendars, let me get the other calendar.
All right, so what I'm hearing is, what we'd like to do is break at this point, we'll come back, we still have to cover the debt model, we've covered one of them, we've covered education, and we've got direction on that, we've got all the special funds to go through, solid waste, we're going to review the, and then move to community funding. So, to see if we can get through, we'll see, you know, we'll schedule it all, if we accelerate, then we won't have the meeting on the 19th.
If there's any questions about the stuff, like, special, the other funds, special funds, if you could go ahead and send them to me, I appreciate it, make it move faster.
Okay, so just so we're clear, we're going to go ahead and, following this, we'll wrap up with any comments by the board, and then, Madam Clerk, if you will go ahead and notice the 17th at 5:30 for an additional budget workshop, and just so we're clear, it means we are going to have, we're going to have one on Thursday at 5:30, we're going to have one on, we've got a meeting Monday, we have budget workshop now on Tuesday, and budget workshop hopefully on Thursday to approve the budget. Any other questions? Everybody agrees with that schedule?
I'm going to say the schedule again now.
So, all we're doing is adding the 17th from 5:30 to 7:30. So, we'll have a, our next budget workshop will be the 12th at 5:30, then we have a regular meeting Monday night, the next budget workshop that we're adding is the 17th at 5:30, and then the 19th we'll add, we already have, at 5:30. So, we have three more budget workshops. All right. I'll open it up for final comments before we move to adjourn. Madam Vice Chair?
Recourse, we're going to resource, correct, and come back, or we adjourn for the evening.
No, we're going to adjourn, we're going to adjourn for the evening, I think the consensus is to add those additional items.
I was just going to say, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you everyone for a wonderful job, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to blame, I'm going to tell Dr. Green it's your fault that I'm not at my meeting, but next Thursday, and then now we're good to go.
Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Patel?
Yeah, did y'all, we just got this one, what is this? Okay.
You presented some information, just if you have questions on the items, just speak with Attorney Moore. Are there any other items to come before the board? Again, just a couple reminders, so, we will send out the updated agenda for the following meeting tomorrow from the clerk. If you have any questions on items that we're going to cover, please send those into Ms. Shaw or the appropriate staff member, so that they can provide that information back out to the board. And, just as a reminder, that the community support, when we get to that, that is the board's opportunity to have that input, you can see what's been recommended by the staff, but historically, it's been a conversation of the commissioners, so just be prepared to do that, and we can make those recommendations at that time. And then remember, once we get through all the items, the intent is to bring all the requests back, so that we can have a conversation and look at any of the scenarios and how that impacts, if we need to adjust dollars in the debt, or we need to adjust how we're going to fund the school, or what we're going to fund within the general fund side, then those are, that's time we'll look at those scenarios, come to an agreement, and then look to how we approve the budget on the final meeting. All right, hearing, no other questions or comments or points of personal privilege? Vice Chairman, I'd ask for an intended motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Tyson, I'm with you, I'm ready to keep going.